Next is a presentation from Mr. Robin States.
Okay.
Yes. If you don't hear me, it's not good to know. Go ahead.
I'm glad you could come. It's sort of bringing up today. Robin States. We're developing. And we were hired as part of the vision to turn the project to analysis. And we brought in two subcontractors and partners with us. The planning or official or natural ones. Actual analysis was created to see. So our part was to first figure out, you know, we were given what area we will attend. So we started to look at the data that would help us figure out what would go there. And so we based that those that the recommendations that we made about what business sectors needed to emphasize were based on leakage, primarily resale leakage out of this area to other areas around you. Work that was less likely to be done at home since we were sort of in the middle of COVID and wanted to make sure that we were not going to get outsourced from an office than that. These workers would would not be outsourced back to home. We also wanted to look at business sectors which would give you the highest economic impact, including sales tax and wages, property tax and occupancy tax. And we wanted to include sectors that were downtown related, i.e. the zoning code as opposed to things like building supplies that typically are not in the downtown. So in choosing the sectors, we looked at the leakage and picked the sectors that had the largest leakage outside of the area. And then we looked at other sectors like a hotel. We really felt like that the hotel on that beautiful waterfront would be sort of the anchor tent that will for the downtown and the other development would really revolve around that hotel and restaurants on the water up in Marina. So we included things like in addition to that, banks, real estate offices, a lot of professional offices that are public facing, not ones like mine. I work in my house. I have a consulting business, I work out of the house. So we weren't the ones that were public facing, I had real estate offices. And then personal services. We included residential, but only if it was going to be located on second, third, you know, however many stories above the commercial space. So really, it sort of physically looks like no fair, if you will, although with like the what Main Street, I guess they call it, that's the residential. So after we decided what kinds of things would go there, then we handed that information over to Benchmark and they came up with two physical designs. Or actually one physical design at the beginning, which can I pass that around or? That piece. Students will want to make to conclude that, but that's all right. Maybe that's right. So the two lines, you can see this is the two lines, the red line is the transmission line. And then the yellow one, so the orange line across the top is where we thought the transmission line needed to be moved to, to give us the best optimal layout here. This second plan is what the plan would look like if you didn't want to pay. If no one wanted to pay to move that transmission line, changes the concept a little bit. But so when we finished that concept, that very first concept, we really felt like it needed that kind of transmission line needed to be moved. And so we based all of our analysis on the best option. And it ended up with about 484,000 square feet of space. Including the hotel, a small 10,000 square foot event or convention space, 85,000 of retail, 155,000 of residential above, and about 150,000 of office space, and about 1,350 parking spaces. So with that square footage and those target sectors in hand, we handed off the information off to Creative EDC and that was the information they used to input into the model. And just so you'll know, residential use is generally a negative economic impact because it costs money for residential, the public service cost for schools and so forth. It's higher than a return, so there's a negative return on investment there. But because it had such a positive impact on space issues, it meant that you didn't have to have to import these spaces in that fairly small piece of land. We went ahead and included it under that. And plus, in this particular case, in the middle of COVID, it gave sort of a really perfect place for a lot of that resale investor space that we were going to put underneath us. Because I can do any way I can hear that in my head is it only looks at existing population? And so did not take into account the huge growth in the area and did not take into account any of the tourist dollars coming in. But keeping that sort of in mind, the one
Yeah, that's good.
Cost of the 484,000 square feet was
1,290.
That's a nice figure.
Figure. You know, the fact that about 1,200. Direct job. And we looked at both direct and indirect effects. So anyway, that's the one time, the fourth time.
The annual
Operational operation impact every year. The space that you have in this system. Those directly and indirectly.
18,000. So like that was
So it's both local and
In the neighborhood, a little bit of $225,000. In addition to that, you also have property tax. We all say 10,000. Thousand dollars, a little over $107,000 a year. And so the county, almost $600,000 a year, that's actually the fire. And then again, it doesn't include the residents, so all those numbers don't even include the tourist dollars and the new residents coming in. So we felt like that was a really nice economic impact and was well worth the time and the space to do it. So with that in mind, we really felt like the opportunities for that downtown were huge. It's obviously it's on the waterfront, so that by itself is the only waterfront other than downtown Williams and the Southport, which is a good ways down, downward. It's the only one on the west side of the river. We'll need on the west side of the river, so there's a fairly large geography in which we think would benefit from it. The thing in discussions with the hotel feasibility consultant that would matter, they were excited about it because the hotel has actually three submarket opportunities, which is very unusual to have three different opportunities. And as you may or may not know, hotels vary, the brands, like all the different chains have different brand names underneath. And so those brands are all about the submarket. So for example, we've got the opportunity for it to be a downtown event hotel like, you know, the Hilton or Embassy Suites across the river. We also have the opportunity for it to be an interchange hotel, which is right here at interchange, which is generally a lower cost type of a brand, not necessarily related to event space. And then we have the opportunity for it to be suburb hotel. So it could be any of those three brands. So that gives a pretty good opportunity, gives you a good opportunity to find somebody to put a hotel there. We also think an opportunity is great because it not only would be a benefit for our local users, but not just the hotel, but the whole downtown, not only for local users, but a nice magnet for tourists. We think that it's a great opportunity for a single developer to take all of, you know, do all the projects at one time, at least on the planning side, like to plan it, design it, get it ready, if they build it, you know, all at once, or if they build it sort of. There's really huge traffic counts out there, probably 74. And so there's a, and good visibility, at least if you're coming, if you're going west, that DOT property sits on top of the hill there. And so a hotel in that location would have great, great visibility. It has connections to the Riverwalk, which y'all have done so very well, and it's also part of that 23rd Vision Plan. Obviously, the population growth over here in most counties, for years, you were the fastest growing county in the state, and even now you're second in the league to Johnson County. You know, so that's good. And there's huge resale leakage across the, from here over across the river. So those are the great opportunities that a potential developer, those are all the key messages that the developer will hear from us and have to use that broadly, all of us who are selling and trying to make this happen. I will add, there are some fairly significant issues that we need to overcome and that we just need to work on, that should happen. Not the least of which is control of that land. There are 19 parcels in that downtown space that we're looking at. Fortunately, only six owners, so that's at least nice that only 30 number of owners as there are. And the two largest owners are fairly significant, so just have to really talk two people into it upfront, or two organizations into it. But it's really important for a developer to know that they can get their hands on all of it at once. And so some sort of control is really critical. Doesn't have to be owned, I think that would certainly be the best thing, but in a letter and an option would be the next best thing, but at least letters of intent from those owners if they would sell at that little price. But it's all that competition. If it's going to be too hard, too expensive, the developer is going to go somewhere else and do a project. So in selling economic development projects, which is, you just have to try to make it as easy as possible for the buyer, so they will choose you instead of somewhere else. The costs obviously are an issue at waterfront, but that's not something that's nearly as important as that control. They know that they're buying waterfront, but it's waterfront. It's going to have higher value. It also has a higher, you know, opportunity because of that. That transmission line is expensive to load. And I think from a cost standpoint, that's probably the most important thing, which is why we ask Benchmark to back and do a second drawing, is what happens if you can't load the transmission line. The other thing, another thing is that, you know, COVID is not over yet and resale is absolutely restructuring, the whole industry is, as a result of that. Internet sales have been, people are buying most everything online, including groceries, food snacks. And so what goes into resale, and obviously things have come back here, tourists have continued to show up in this area for sure. And locals have gone back out to the stores, but the places they've gone out, ever since I started working on this project a while ago, I started paying attention to every resale space that I pass, wherever I am. And it seems as though these days, the only thing that's there is a personal service, a nail salon, hair salon, vegetarian clinic, or restaurants. But those are things that you can't do over the internet. And so there's still opportunities to, even in COVID world, even in the internet world, there are still going to be local things that you have to do. So that, we know that's good. Some of that property is going to need some environmental remediation, nothing significant to replace ones. The river is shallow. There's questions about whether or not you can dredge from Marina, we think, because DOTC has had docks and piers there that will be grandfathered in, and there has been dredging since the Liberty ships. So we've given our fingers crossed that may require some walking very carefully through processes to make that happen. And then the other thing that is of some concern is that the sectors that we chose in other than office, which is one of the reasons why we included so much office space, is that hospitality, retail sectors, those are by far the lowest wages out there of all sectors period, anyway. And they just don't pay much, and COVID has made that real clear. And so we've included a lot of office, so professional technical wages are substantially higher. And so hopefully that value will affect us a little bit. So in addition, so now that we have the downtown all planned, if you will, we know what we want, we just have to kind of make that happen. So in addition to the downtown, the town has asked me to take a look at other potential commercial property around town, let's see if we can, between now and the time the downtown happens, try to generate some activity on some of the undeveloped properties. So we've got, taken the zoning map into account, and obviously I don't need to tell y'all anything about the zoning map, you probably already know it by heart. But I took the zoning map and took our own internal GIS application that we use in house and went through and identified every single undeveloped piece of property in the commercial and industrial areas. So we're talking about the areas that are on the Blackwell Road, the north side of Blackwell Road, the southeast side of Blackwell Road, right there on the east side of Chapel Creek Road, River Road, and this, thank you, both sides of River Road, it's the central business district area is the name. And then Waterford Business Park and the Magnolia Park, which is primarily industrial over there on the west side of 17. And so we made some maps, and I know you can't see them, but we'll get the point and I'll make sure that we send these. This is the area just over here, that's on the, kind of at the end of that Blackwell Road, that is the commercial area, but this is highway with the Blackwell Overway, commercial site. So what we did was we just identified in blue the parcels that were undeveloped. I put this yellow wetlands on top of them so we could see what, you know, if it might be available, but it might not be worth anything. Like this is Blackwell Road, for example. The north side of Blackwell Road is all wetlands. So no matter that it's empty, it's empty for a reason, and it's going to be empty for a while. So we did that, we made these up, made these maps. I'm going to contact all the landowners of all these parcels that are undeveloped. A number of them are already officially available for sale. I was going to say MLS and take a look. We've got, let's see how many parcels that are officially on MLS. And then today, when I was riding around, I found some more that have signs that are not in the MLS. I'll find out when I talk to the owners why they're not in the MLS. And then, so we've got one site on the black, north side of Blackwell Road that's for sale. We've got all of this corner here, and I won't go into all those. But anyway, the point is, we're paying attention to all those, we'll find out, try to at least catalog all this, see what the situation is, try to help y'all market those. We're going to try and encourage as many of them to be available, if they're not already available, advise them, advise y'all on these empty issues that we see for things that may be appropriate targets for that land. Then we're going to try and help you put together some, you know, development tools, marketing flyers, we're going to support the realtors in the best way that we can to try to make that stuff happen. We've already talked, we've got some friends who are retail specialists and said, I can call, fortunately we didn't have a friend that I can call them, I don't want to pay them too much money to just tell me if we want a crack of barrel, what are the criteria? So they'll send me real quick what the traffic counts are, and whether they're on the AM or PM side of the road, Broadway 17. Starbucks, that was the first thing, and said, I don't know, I could get a Starbucks on the corner up there. Sadly, we're on the AM side of the road, but the traffic counts are good enough on the interstate, you know, on 74, but I'm on the River Road, so I still will know that's a possibility, that, you know, they may, they may take that interchange off. Like, well, obviously on any interstate, I kind of let them take the interchange to get off. But, you know, so we'll check in some of that and see what we can do to help. So that's what we're, that's what we've done. This is what we're going to do, going to be doing, and I'm happy with all that to answer the questions. That's a real long, very much, isn't it?
We appreciate it. Your questions, your
Do you have any advice for me? Do you have any background knowledge, maybe knows how to find me, if you know about some properties, what the situation is or isn't, and things that we need to look at sooner rather than later? Let us know and feel free or feel free to call me directly and help me with as much marketing knowledge as I can, get stuff into my head and show up here at town.
I had a question on, with the vision plan, the town does own the DOT parcel and the rest of six, you said the six owners in the downtown, is the town one of the six or no?
Six plus the town. The town owns a little piece of the very northeast form of that. And sadly, the, obviously the town owns the southern wetlands area of the DOT property on the east side of Oldwood Road. But neither the county GIS nor my national parcel source has divided that, has divided that property out yet. So same as it does, I'll change that on that. But the town also already owns another parcel. So six plus, six plus the town. I did not include the town in that city.
And it was interesting for me to hear about the hotel anchor, which I think would be awesome. I know the history of this area, the two parcels you can see right through there, the idea was to try, but I was on that, it's just, it doesn't bring in with the hotels wanting. Maybe that would, I know here that was
That's only, that's going to be only interchange or suburb.
Right.
That's not a downtown location yet. So this is that event space overlooked the water, you know, wedding hotel, kind of a, it's not going to be as fancy as a hotel palace, but it certainly could be an instant suites kind of a new space. So and certainly the event space, again, it's talking to the hotel people, the feasibility guy. I asked him about the event space, I said, does the hotel want to own that and operate it or not? They said they want control over it for sure, because that's part of their revenue because, you know, money from the food service and the rental from that space. But if it turns out that, you know, some lower priced brand that doesn't want to do that space, one of either the suburb or the interchange brand wants to look there, then the town could own the event space if you, you wanted to. So that's, there's some place to be looking at that.
That transmission line is a problem.
It's a problem.
Yeah.
And it's expensive.
Is there any chance of, I don't know what town has, is it Duke, I guess Duke probably is in, saying, hey guys, you just want to move it one day? And incentives of some sort for the developer? I don't know how you
It's multi millions of dollars. If it was just a distribution line, I'd be thrilled, but if it was a significant transmission line, which makes it, which makes it difficult. From a visual standpoint, that kind of messes with my payroll. So again, personal opinion, that's, it's even more, I think that's still an issue with ownership, because ownership is, you know, good, good sale.
Right.
Where is it? It is in that, I passed around that.
This was
Yeah. It's the red one.
The big red one. It's right up there. It's back here. Yes.
So, you know, any market knowledge, if you want to, yes, I'm just making this a read. You know, what I'm going to do.
It's very exciting to be there. It's awesome. Get to work. Is someone to buy it?
And, you know, all these other properties around too, that, that, here, sorry, that's that one's exciting. It's mighty to know that and some of the things that I think would be just same competition. As a merchant center. So whatever, providing tax attendance. Somewhere here, those accounts
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's very exciting.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes. So thank you. That's the old.
Next, I want to mention this, this is a discussion on ministry and other modifications to go with the Let's all have eight months. Yep, I'll start. Um, where is? Yeah. Page two. So do some. See, let's. Uh, so we're picking up our discussion from last month. Previous with that minor case and also minor adjustments as we're going. Uh, there are two main items that we discussed that need follow-ups. First being consulting with town attorney, Nora Blanchard. I'm using the term minor adjustment. Those are the cases that occurred prior to the approval. And distinguishing that versus minor modification. In fact, minor modification was determined to one sixty D. Modification may have. So we're distinguishing, the idea was we're distinguishing between those terms. Before an actual approval. So I'll get back in a second and just to mention that the other thing I want to discuss was taking a look at the table that we created. Show all the percentage adjustments that will be allowed. Modifying the table to make it more clear with the town manager. Minor adjustment. So the example we talked about was the table was ridiculous at times. Since then, we cleared up, we could read that as the town manager. But we're heading in the direction of wanting, uh, not having the town manager, not be allowed to make a minor adjustment. Sure required setbacks for immediate development. Because that made it a good business through by the thing. Town manager was not making that type of decision to be sort of. So the idea was we were trying to adjust that table so that makes that clear that can be fixed. You know, related to that, uh, also removing the confusion section B. Actually, regarding minor modifications after the adjustment approval. Repeating that, that confusion where it's, they talked about the planning board being allowed to make the minor adjustments in section A. And it's referring to where town manager was referenced in that table. Long story short, it was just confusing. So I guess, uh, that. So to hit it really quick, uh, the first main item that I talked about. Minor adjustment versus minor modification. Talked to Mr. Blanchard about that and he's some problem with that distinction. That was a good idea. It just keeps it clear as to with respect to one sixty D, it's that term minor modification applies after the approval. And I included that email correspondence in your packet if you're interested. There any questions on that before I move on to the second item? So, uh, on the second item, and in terms of modifying the table as been put together in section A. Uh, that's been mostly addressed, but it's gonna require some discussion to make sure that the language is as everybody wants it. So instead, in that table, instead of the, where it says the applicable approval authority is the town manager for the lesser percentages. For example, the town manager can do a minor adjustment of up to fifteen percent on setbacks. And then the B of the board of adjustment can do up to thirty percent. Um, instead of saying that fifteen percent number, instead of saying town manager now says asterisk C note one. And, uh, asterisk refers to the bottom of the table. And now has a note that says that applicable approval authority has the same approval authority for the development as a whole. For example, the applicable approval authority for minor development is the town manager. Whereas the applicable approval authority for major development is the planning board. And the applicable approval authority for special use permits is the board commissioners. So for example, that would mean an applicant meeting, uh, an applicant looking for a minor adjustment on setbacks for a major development, which is reviewed by the planning board. Yeah, then. Some, an applicant that's seeking a minor adjustment for major development. That would go through planning board. It wouldn't be approved by the town manager. And so that fixes the point I made earlier about if it was the town manager making that decision on major development, that would be sort of overruling the planning board. So that table, instead of seeing same town manager, it has that note and so for major development, it'll be the planning board that reviews those issues. And the example we keep coming back to is setbacks. So if an applicant was doing a major development and they wanted to get a minor adjustment, they would go through the planning board to get that fifteen percent adjustment rapid to town manager. And if they wanted more, they would have to go through the board of adjustment. Um, also to remove that previously mentioned confusion in section B, which talks about after the development approval. That confusing language was where I talked about what a board can do for minor modification. It was referring to the town managers. It was weird to say that board can do the things that the town manager can do in table nine one. Um, that now just instead of saying town manager, it refers to that same note one, that table nine one does. So for example, uh, the planning board is allowed to make a minor modification that include the items listed in table nine. And the specific reason for having that in that section is hypothetically, if someone already has a development approval and they realize they wanna get uh, a setback adjustment. We already have the development approval, so it's gonna be a minor modification in that case, or after original development approval. So that language allows the planning board in that case to, to give that same setback adjustment that would have been allowed during the original review. Another point, while seemingly insignificant first, at the very beginning of section A, that talks about prior to development approval. And now includes that phrase prior to development approval. And that just makes it clear when a minor adjustment specifically by the board of adjustment is allowed. Uh, in other words, that phrase makes it clear that the board of adjustment can approve those minor adjustments. After, say, the commissioners approve a special use permit. Without that language, it was unclear. You could have had the case where the board of commissioners approve a special use permit. And then it can still be read that the board of adjustment could allow up to a thirty percent setback on that special use permit. And that would again sort of be overruling the board of commissioners in that case. Um, so now those board of adjustment scenarios where the board of adjustment can allow thirty percent on setbacks. Uh, that's can, can only happen at the very beginning of the process. And so another point to make here. It's a little bit of a, a word game is in that section A, like I talked about earlier, we have that phrase prior to development approvals. And then in section B, we're allowing the town manager or planning board or commissioners, depending on the case, to, uh, allow those note one minor adjustments that are in section A. And I'm just pointing at that, that language sort of carves out uh, the scenarios where that table can apply after a development approval. Uh, and the main point is that the result of all that is that the board of adjustment, when they're doing a minor adjustment, that must be done in the process. Uh, and if the applicant wants that kind of adjustment after they get the development approval, that would be considered a major modification. And per one sixty D, they have to go through the same process they would have gone through for the original approval. Uh, so there there's more of a burden there to have to go through that full process. Uh, and then just to bring it up, because we haven't it hasn't been suggested so far, but after contemplating these amendments for a while, it might be worth considering, uh, changing the table for those larger adjustments where the board or the board of adjustment is involved. Changing that to the board of commissioners. Since they're the ultimate decision makers for the town. There are pros and cons to considering that. One of the main reasons for suggesting it is they are the ultimate decision makers for the town. Trying to avoid having the board of adjustment make decisions that are against the wishes of the board of commissioners. Um, I would say the major, one of the main downsides, uh, could be that these amendments result in a lot of applicants submitting for a minor adjustment. And if the commissioners were involved in that review, puts more work on commissioners. And a related downside would be that putting them in the position to make those types of potentially contentious decisions with the, with the citizens, so. And that could be a reason to, to keep it as is and keep it as the board of adjustment. And like I said, one of the main reasons for doing it would be to avoid situations where the BOA approves of minor adjustment decisions that are against the desire of the commissioners. And particularly with special uses, uh, since the commissioners are ultimately, uh, they're ultimately who approves those special uses. So if anything, maybe one of the small changes that could be made in that table, uh, like was done for note one, do a similar approach for note two, in other words, replace where it says BOA with a note two. And, uh, say that that applicable approval authority is the BOA unless it's a special use permit, in which case that applicable authority is the commissioners. Special use only, more measures. That's, if, if anything, that might be the right change to make. I think that's the way to go, because otherwise there's all this making the board of adjustment. You're, you're turning to commissioners as supportive, yes, right, you know? In fact, doing, doing the way you were about to say. Right, exactly, I think it's fine. Yeah, kind of. Two options, either replace BOA completely with board commissioners, which. I don't think. And then, if anything, make it so that only special uses have these extra adjustments. That's the way to go, because that's the only case where the commissioners do improve the development, right? Right. Yes, that makes sense. And in that case, I think instead of saying note one and note two, I'm gonna, makes more sense to say category one and category two. We have, uh, the category one being all like the fifteen percent numbers. Uh, category two being all the thirty percent numbers. And then we'll have notes at the bottom of the table that say, who is the applicable authority, uh, approval authority in the different cases, like. I think that's a good idea. I worry we're gonna make too many notes. But I think the concept is perfect. Yeah. Okay. Then. No. Yeah. All right. Go with that. Let's see, I think we're good on this issue, but there's a similar concern with allowing the board of adjustment to approve minor adjustments for a major development. Uh, and like special uses where the board of commissioners proves that the major development is approved by planning board and that could sort of bind the planning board on including those minor adjustments in the approval. But the BOA does the same members of the planning board. So, uh, that's probably not a real issue. I just make the point, if that's ever changed in the future, it may become an issue, so it might be worth considering now. Again, been that way for many years, so if it does ever get changed, maybe easier to address it at that time. Yeah. Okay. Uh, the last point before I walk through the actual amendments. I've conferred in between when I wrote this memo and now, I've confirmed with Mr. Blanchard regarding the public hearings, uh, that are needed for these minor modifications. Um, specifically when the board of adjustment is gonna be involved. That is gonna be a what is now called in one sixty D evidentiary hearing, in other words, what used to be called a quasi judicial hearing. Uh, and that involves the findings of fact. All the same things that apply for a board of adjustment experience. Also, uh, a special use permit. Um, so I think a long story short there is that's gonna result in some additional language being needed in these text amendments that give a brief description as to what's required of the word of adjustment in making that decision for the all the numbers that are thirty percent. Um, and Sharon, can you pull up that town that Gary? The, you know, something to. Um, town of Gary had some pretty brief languages that I think I'm gonna, again, use as a template like we've done with the rest of this ordinance. And like I said, it gives some really brief direction as to how a board is to make that decision. Do you have?
Thank you.
And then go to page two. Yeah, I didn't hear this. Number two, the zoning board adjustment initiative or approval of minor modification. And it's this, the second sentence is partially what I'm thinking of, the zoning board adjustment may approve minor modification only defines after conducting a quasi judicial hearing, but the modification advances the goals and purposes of this ordinance. And they have some other language in here that may or may not be applicable to what we're doing. But they get at relieving practical difficulties, et cetera. Basically just having something that the board has to rely on as they're making that quasi judicial decision. I'm planning on adding a few sentences like that to this ordinance. And then just to walk through the actual changes real quick. Uh, all the new stuff is in purple. I cleaned up a few places where we were distinguishing between minor modification and minor adjustment. And then echoed that language that I saw in the town of Gary ordinance where they talked about. Just echo Gary's language where he talks about minor modifications, I use the phrases, uh, Just echo Carrie's language where they talked about minor modifications, they use the phrases. To zoning district standards or to development zoning district standards. There's a couple of adjustments on there on page thirty. And then flipping. That page. We're getting to the point, see the updated table there. Page thirty two. It's getting messy enough with all the revisions that we made. A lot easier to digest and understand what's going on, but clean version.
Just gonna say for the next.
Yeah, that's behind this version. Like several. You have all the edits from the dirty version of Article nine. And if you flip past that, there should be a. Completely clean version of all the. So that clean version on table is a lot easier to understand what's going on. You can see where it says C note one. And all the places where it used to say town manager. And then note one down at the bottom of the table. Includes the sentence that I read earlier about. Who that applicable authority is depending on the case, so. Town manager for minor development, planning board for major development and board of commissioners for special use permits. And I did talk about we'll do something similar to where it says in all the places where it says board of adjustment. Probably have a category two, no one changed the category one. Flipping that page, the top of page thirty two. See it in the dirty version of the actual little brief. Addition has been here, but in parentheses and that be very top of the page. After development approval has an issue. That just makes it more clear. What this section is talking about. And that it specifically applies to one sixty D, which is after development approval is issued. Other than that, it's just the changes for a town manager like you look in C. Middle of the page. E one dot C. So. Yeah. That used to say minor business allowed by the town manager. Better example of this is. Near bottom of the page. Too late to. By planning board. It's the same sentence. Makes more sense if you like reading this way. The planning board for minor modifications can allow the minor adjustments from their. So it's a major development. All those items in the table that refer to that part. Planning. Yeah. And other than that, it's all just changing, making sure that. It's just not using the phrase minor adjustment, minor modification. With that, I need to add a few sentences that I talked about that gives direction to the board of adjustment. Change the category one and category two stuff. Take out of that, it's gonna be. To the note at the bottom of the table.
I think you should say this, the way this reads. Tim is awesome, I think this, I gotta go, okay? We change the middle block list. See no blue or no blue.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do. That'd be, that's why. Instead of that having just C note one. It's not a name. We also have to say like each subsection. They can say second. Basically, it's adjust any of this, right? It's just a special use permit. Just any of it. They're related to commissioners. So you have to say if a special use permit. Cycle. Yeah, either that or. What I was considering before putting that one. Is that everywhere where it says C note one? Minor development. This town manager, major development. Minor development, town manager, major development, special uses. The other three lines. Everywhere it says C note one. I didn't find it in the middle one either. Not making it be explainable, right? Get more, you get out of column. Get out of column for. Each time it proven. It could be nice to say with exactly who it was. Yeah. Yeah, I'll give it some thought and maybe be. Given feedback or how the. It's maybe the table where they're. Having sections where it's just so it's a cycle. There's the table, especially this table. Instead of having. They don't take this table that six. Yeah. That means that. I don't think we're ready to say anything. Trump or this will be here next week or next month. Think we need to come back. Yeah, my hope is especially since I'm adding a few sentences about giving direction to the board of adjustment. At that meeting, we say everything. So we'll bring that to us next one. With a clean, precise, awesome table of the ability I had to say to do it, but you could.
Yeah.
We wish our staff to be able to get some extra credit. Yeah. We'll have that next month and then. The world role business, the exercise business. So is that, is that gonna happen?
Yes, it's great.
I think that's also. I think that's what it's called. Yeah, awesome. What do you do about the public years or anything? Wish to, you just wanted to, you appreciate your company.
I I wanted to hear about it downtown.
Always waits for the last minute to ask me to. Lay out, lay out the rules.